Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this time that we can meet together as a city and our city leaders, and we pray that you would bless this meeting tonight. We ask that your wisdom would be granted to these leaders and to all that's said and done in this room. And Lord, we thank you for a city where there is a concern for citizens. And Lord, we pray that you would bless this time tonight, make it profitable, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Al. Oh, let's do the pledge allegiance.
The flag of our nation recognizes the principles for which it stands. Repeat after me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation to make? Who's going to? I am? Okay. Okay. High school, right? Can we have this, are they here? Hey, come on down. Go get a pitcher. Okay, let's go. Hey, hold on. Okay, good. This is the steering committee for the Lancaster High School who did the Armed Forces Day celebration last week. How many went to that? That was a magnificent, magnificent job you did. I've been to a lot of events, and I haven't seen one that well organized. So we thought it deserved some recognition. And so let me do that. And we got pitchers for your parents. And I think we got letters for your resumes, too. Yeah. I guess I should do the proclamation first, is that right? Okay. Do we have your teacher here?
No.
She let you come home by yourself? Wow. Well, this is for Mrs. Goodrow's U.S. History students at Lancaster High School. It's Pride of the Nation Armed Forces Day, May 17th, 2003, and Lancaster City Council recognizes with appreciation your work to honor armed forces. And we have one for... Is it Michalina? Michalina Gibbs? Sierra Martin? She didn't come either. We're gonna take her off the list. Madison Larkin? And Jessica Dutcher? And Richard Garcia? And Christian Cavallain? Cavallains? Cavallains. And we have, the special contacts committee was Malcolm Vagulon, is he here? And Amber Phil? And Xavier Madrid? Wonderful. You guys did a wonderful job. So, do we got a pitcher for these?
Yes.
Who's doing that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Uh... Yeah. Okay, great. Oh, we got the letter for you. Good. Want me to pass these out first? Christian's not here? Oh, okay, great. And Malcolm? Madison, I want to let you take those, okay? Make sure they get distributed. Amber? And Xavier? Okay, everybody got theirs? Okay. Oh, you didn't get yours, okay. This is for Mrs. Goodrow. Nope. This is for Mr. Root. And we have one for you. Thank you.
So I can see the front of them, that would be nice, to all of us, just like that.
Here, you can hold these. Okay, great.
One, two, three.
There you go. Terrific. Please, yes. Now you have to stay for the whole meeting. No, I'm kidding. City manager, do you have any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have to ask in the audience, if I could, please, Reginald Jones? Reginald Jones? Anything close to that?
Agenda.
I just put it to the non-agenda items, he didn't mark it down, so we'll put it there.
Okay, thank you.
He did? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any items on the agency consent calendar you'd like to poll for discussion? Or do we have a motion?
I'll move that, I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar for the agency.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Good. Any discussion? Let's vote. Any items on the council consent calendar you want to have polled for discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to poll CC2, which is the approved redevelopment agency and regular meeting minutes of May 13th meeting. Needs to be a correction made.
Anything else? Okay, with the exception of that?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as now constituted.
Any second?
I second that.
Any discussion? Let's vote. Should we do CC2 now? And, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to have the record reflect under the regular meeting minutes, item CA5, solar energy discussion. There were some notes taken in regards to my discussion, and should the discussion be broadened to include solar energy? And my discussion was wind energy.
That's correct, I remember that.
I don't want somebody to think I don't read these notes.
Okay. So, you're the parliamentarian, how do we do that, Mr. Smith?
I'll move to adopt CC2.
As amended?
As amended.
Second? Any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, let's open the public hearings. We have PH1, which is an appeal from the Planning Commission on a conditional use... Did we pull that off?
You need to open the public hearing and then, then continue it.
Oh, I see.
If there's, if there's anybody here that's prepared to talk about that item tonight, they should probably hold their comments until June 24th.
Okay. Anybody wanted to discuss that? Any cards?
No cards.
Okay, we'll continue it to June 24th, 2008, at the regular meeting. And now I'd like to open the public hearing on PH2, and we'll hear from Brian Ludicki, the Director of Planning.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Paris, and members of the council. The item that's before you tonight is a request for the introduction of an ordinance that would establish a overlay designation for the designation of senior mobile home parks within the city. Last August, the city council adopted an ordinance that was an urgency ordinance, and the purpose of that was to establish a moratorium on the conversion of mobile home parks that were senior occupancy parks to family or non-restricted occupancy. The council ultimately voted to extend that moratorium for a period of one year, or until August 14th of 2008, to allow time for a potential ordinance that would address this issue to be drafted. The council acted because there was concern that certain parks that had traditionally been occupied or reserved primarily for senior occupancy were being rented to various age groups, and residents within those parks were concerned about the effects that that could have. The ordinance that's before you would actually do some fairly simple things. It would establish a mobile home overlay zone designation that would actually be placed on the zoning map, that would designate parks that are senior mobile home parks. Those would be defined as any park in which at least 80% of the occupancies, as of August 14th of 2007, consisted of at least one resident being aged 55 or older. That designation would then place upon that park a restriction that further rentals could only be done where at least one of the occupants would be aged 55 or older. That zoning designation overlay could either be applied by the city on its own motion, or could be requested by the owner of the mobile home park itself. The Planning Commission reviewed this on, at their meeting of April 21st, 2008. They took testimony and they voted unanimously to recommend to the city council adoption of this ordinance. This ordinance, if introduced and ultimately adopted, would also add a couple of additional protections for parks which are senior mobile home parks. First, it would remove from, from them the possibility of being declared non-conforming. That would ensure that parks that are designated for senior occupancy remained as senior housing for the foreseeable future. The other thing that it would do is establish that if the city made any changes in, in land use designations or zoning regulations, that those would not, by their actions, constitute a problem for those senior mobile home parks. They could expand without falling under the provisions of the, of the non-conforming status of the code. Staff, based upon what we have heard and what we've done in terms of working with the city attorney's office to prepare this ordinance, believes that it addresses the issue that the council originally saw last August. We are recommending to you the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with the requirements and findings shown in your attachment to the staff report.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have any communications?
No communications.
Thank you. We have two speaker cards, we'll start with Mr. Rivera, Ray Rivera.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the audience, both here and there. I want to thank you for this opportunity that you've granted yourselves to engage in local control, subject to what happens next Tuesday with Prop 98 and our mobile home park issues. It's not every day that you get to practice and exercise local control in this matter, even with the impending possibility that Proposition 98 would pass. I want to thank the mayor for his strong statement as referred to in the paper today on opposing Proposition 98. We wish you included Prop 99 in support, but that's another matter, sir. In any event, the, the issue arose sometime back because those of us at Sherwood Mobile Home Park, on the far east side, were experiencing the following. Not only had we never had a clubhouse, no, no playground for kids. Remember, the owner is seeking to make this an all-age park, kids and all families. We have four convicted child molesters in our park. One lives behind me. He paid his dues a long time ago, served his parole out well. Next to the manager is another such case. I don't think the manager even knew that he had this background. As far as I know, these gentlemen have been acting within the law, and quite frankly, we, we have used in the past them as a sort of argument to say, you want to bring children into this situation? Well, we have an exposed swimming pool that is out in the street, not too far from a new housing development. We didn't come in there because we knew what we were doing, that we were coming to a diverse park. We were coming into a senior park. And at that time, most parks were senior parks. So I would hope that whatever happens next week, you will exercise your power unanimously as the council and planning commission did, and pass the staff recommended ordinance, and hopefully we'll go on to deal with other local control issues in this field of affordable housing, in which you have 28 mobile home parks, and three of them still are senior parks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Okay. William Crawford? William Crawford? Oh, sorry about that.
Not as fast as I used to be. My name is William Crawford. I'm a longtime resident of the Antelope Valley. Thank you, folks, for letting me speak here. I'm in support of the senior park ordinance. I know firsthand what can happen to a mobile home park. Approximately 10 years ago, they came through our park and said, okay, tomorrow, we're turning this into a family park. Hello. Since then, we've had the SWAT team out there. They unloaded about 29 rifles and all that right next door to me. Children in this park, this is a family park, small one. There's only 40-some people in there now. We have abandoned mobile homes, vandalized mobile homes. It was a senior park when I moved in. What did I do, you know? Cost to move out, and we've got stolen cars, stripped cars, we need more police patrol out there. We need police patrol in the park. I got four sex offenders, two child molesters, in a park that doesn't have 45 tenants in That's a little unfair to these families, isn't it? You know, I'm not, I'm not too good at speaking. I, I usually say too much, but I hope I got my point across. We need senior parks. We need as many of them as we can get. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay. That's all the speaker cards. Any discussion? I guess I have to close the public hearing first, now we can have a discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go on record, over the last two years being on the Planning Commission, I'm proud to say that I've been a proponent and an advocate to retain senior housing in the city of Lancaster, and this is one avenue that we offer a, a group of seniors as an alternative, you know, housing stock, and hopefully I urge the rest of my council members, and I think that we're probably all on the same page, that we're all for this overlay ordinance. And unless there's any other further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to approve the mobile home park overlay ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
One quick question for Mr. Ludicki before we vote. And it may be in the ordinance, but I didn't see it. At least one tenant has to be 55 years or older. In the event that, that tenant passes away, is, is there a method of dealing with that in terms of the percentages of, of seniors, or is that just not addressed? It may not even be a problem.
If it's a situation where it's a sole tenant, and that space was available to rent again, they could only rent to someone where at least one of the occupants was aged 55 or older. If it was a situation where it was, you know, two people and one was under age 55, the ordinance really doesn't speak to that issue, other than to say that someone who is, is a legal resident of the park, it's not the intent of the ordinance that, that they suddenly become illegal in terms of their occupancy.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead and vote. And it's unanimous. Okay, now moving on to new business, item one, and that is the approval of the city manager's contract. Do we have any speaker cards?
No speakers cards.
Okay. Do we have any discussion or a motion?
I'll move that we approve and accept the city manager's contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Let's vote. That was pretty quick, Mark. The only discussion is, it's unanimous.
I think we ought to give Mark a round of applause.
Okay, we'll now hear a report from the financier, Finance Director, on the proposed ambulance ordinance, and I probably shouldn't get involved, I mean.
Mayor?
Never mind. Oh, oh, what? I have to open up for public hearing first?
Mayor, I'm gonna invite Monique Edwards to the podium to give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Paris.
Good evening.
Council members, staff. Tonight I bring before you the introduction of ordinance number 901, which would amend the Lancaster Municipal Code as it relates to ambulances. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide general operating procedures and standards for all ambulance transportation service providers that operate within the city of Lancaster, in both emergency and non-emergency situations, by the way of requiring them to provide a copy of their County of Los Angeles license prior, prior to obtaining a City of Lancaster business license. After conducting a significant amount of research, which included providing or obtaining input from department heads, from affected staff, from stakeholders, from County of Los Angeles employees, it was determined that it is in the best interest of public welfare and safety to establish such an ordinance. Out of the nine companies that currently operate within our city, all of them currently have a City of Lancaster business license. Seven of them currently have a County of Los Angeles license. The significance of requiring a County of Los Angeles license ensures that all of the safety inspections that are conducted by the County of Los Angeles and the, and the California Highway Patrol have been successfully passed. Without requiring a copy of their license, there is no way for staff or the city to know that those safety standards have been met. When reviewing the proposed ordinance with all of the stakeholders, I received no opposition. I was asked by two of the companies how much time they would be given to obtain compliance with actually getting a county license. I've personally spoken to both of them, and advised that we would extend the timeframe up to January 1st, 2009, to allow them to obtain compliance. That date was selected based on the timeframe it requires the county to process their paperwork, and for them to attend a pre-scheduled quarterly hearing. So we've allowed the maximum amount of time for them to obtain compliance. I will be their contact through them, through that timeframe, and I will work with them in every way that I can. In regards to fees, there are no additional costs to the business holders, business owners. They will simply pay their licensing fees as they normally do. So in an effort to ensure that the best services provided to the residents of our community, and that community safety standards are met, it is staff's recommendation that you accept the introduction of this ordinance as it relates to ambulance service providers. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Open it for public hear...
Just this one speaker?
Just the one speaker? Okay. And that's Mr. Kane, is it?
Yes, Douglas Kane. Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Douglas Kane, the President of the LA County Ambulance Association and co-owner of Antelope Ambulance. Just basically wanted to give our support on this ordinance, and since there's no opposition, I'm not going to go through a, a long dissertation here unless you have any questions of me. No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to take just a moment, Mr. Kane, just, I know that your history in the valley and in the ambulance business goes back probably decades.
Yes.
And I just wanted, I, I work in the healthcare field, and I see your guys out there all the time, just want to say thank you for being there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 901.
I'll second that.
Your second? Your second? Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's vote. It's unanimous, and now we'll hear from a report from our Planning Director, Mr. Ludicki.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Paris, and members of the city council. The item that's before you at this time is the authorization for the purchase, or to fund the purchase of 135 acres of conservation property. The way in which this is proposed is that the city would be the funder for this purchase. The actual purchase would be done by the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority slash Desert Mountain Conservation Authority. This is a partnership that exists between the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and the Antelope Valley Resource Conservation District. Both of those entities obviously have long histories in conservation efforts within the Santa Monica Mountains area, and also in the Antelope Valley. Back in late 2005, the city council adopted a biological mitigation fee ordinance that basically required all development to pay into a mitigation fund. The intent of the ordinance was that any development that occurs within the city does result in an incremental loss of open space and biological resources. The intent of the ordinance was to ensure that as development occurs, the city would have a fund available to ultimately work with outside entities to purchase conservation land that would act as a mitigation for this overall cumulative loss of biological resources within the city. The intent was that this program would remain in place until such time as there was an area-wide conservation plan, such as the West Mojave Coordinated Management Plan. As of this time, that plan is not in place and is still being worked on. Ever since this fee was adopted and the city began collecting it, staff has been working to the extent possible to find suitable sites where funds that are acquired in this way could be utilized. A couple of months ago, we were approached and contacted by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy in regards to the potential for acquisition of land on the west side of the city. This area, and it's shown as well as I can on this map, consists of properties that are in two different locations. One is to the northwestern side of the existing Poppy Preserve. The other is land that is contiguous to what's known as the Shays Castle area down to the west of Munce Ranch. These are areas that the... These are areas that the Conservancy has been looking to acquire land. They already have land within the area totaling of about 275 acres. In addition to that acreage, of course, there is the poppy preserve, which is about 1,700 acres, and the Ripley State Park property, which is west of here, about 500 acres. This 135 acres was explored and looked at by staff. I do have some photographs of how that looks. This is the area that's near the poppy preserve. As you can tell, it contains poppies also. These are lands that would be available for conservation should you approve this particular item. This is another site. This is near the Shay Castle area. This also contains some wash habitat, which, as those of you who are familiar with biological resources know, these are very, very key sites to biologists. They provide good linkage areas for wildlife. And this is the largest of the properties, 110 acres. It doesn't show as well as I wish it would, but it's a kind of a flat area that then descends down into the wash area, and the property encompasses both of those. And another picture of that same property. We feel as staff that this is a very exciting opportunity. It provides the chance to build on land acquisition in an area where that has already been going on. It's certainly an area that the Conservancy is interested in, and we feel that it certainly shows the wisdom that the city had two and a half years ago in taking a long-range look at ways in which we can help preserve our open space areas. So we would recommend that you authorize the funding of this up to a maximum of $45,000 and authorize the city manager to enter into the necessary agreements to bring this about. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Brian, is this the first acquisition out of that impact fund?
If authorized, it would be the first expenditure out of the fund, yes.
Thank you.
Brian, a conversation I had with an individual today, some of that land, obviously we saw different pictures. Historically, has that all been pretty much desert historically, where it's never been developed, or? I mean, obviously some of the pictures shows that it looks like to me it's never been disturbed.
As far as we know, there's been no development on it. I'm sure that it's been used for grazing land at times, but generally that's not as destructive to it as obviously urban development or something would be.
Okay.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards on this one.
Any communications?
No, sir.
I'd like to say something. I think this is, this is great that we're doing this. You know, as the city looked at, at the construction and the development of our city, we knew that just taking another Joshua tree and planting it in the middle of some housing project wasn't good enough to take care of the habitat that we have out here, which is a habitat for our next generation. So the city looked at, what can we do to preserve the? The biologist said you need at least 80 acres in order to preserve the habitat. So the city, years ago, put together the prime desert woodland, which is around 102.4 acres of prime desert woodland. And as we started growing, we knew that we had to mitigate the development that was coming to the city. But that 102 acres couldn't do it. So that's why the city started this mitigation fee of about $770 per acre. And this is just the best purchase for it, because this gives you a contiguous piece of property that can mitigate a lot of the things that we're trying to preserve. And somebody said disturbing, you know, I was looking at the pictures, this is the first time I was able to see the pictures. We didn't have them today. It looks like great burrowing owl habitat also, which is a species of concern that we're always looking for. And hopefully between the wash and the burrowing owl and this habitat, it's able to take care of a lot of the mitigation that we're looking at. So I think it's a, I think it's a great move.
Even in the absence of the West Mojave Plan, which is, would be wonderful if we get the state and everyone else on board to adopt that, even in the absence of that, a good example of a partnership between the developers, they paid the money. The planning commission, the city council, each did their role, and the nonprofit, such as the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy, all getting on board and coalescing around one idea and one project and making it happen. Whether it's public safety or biological diversity, I think that's a good example of what we need to do in the future, come together and solve problems.
This was something that you started on the planning commission, is that right? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, when I was chairman, we were trying to look at a way to mitigate, because I knew that 102 acres wasn't going to be enough. We had to do something, something more.
This is, this is something that started many years ago that has just come to fruition, and quite honestly, it's a magnificent thing you started. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we authorize the purchase of the 135 acres of conservancy property from the biological impact fee account, and we turn it over to the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority.
Second? Second? Let's vote. Approved unanimously. Now we go to the council agenda. And I guess the first one is mine, which is, we've previously tabled the...
Yeah, just as a technicality, Mr. McEwen, do we have to reopen the public hearing? Because we have a card? Because we had, we had closed the public hearing before, so...
It wasn't a public hearing.
It wasn't a public hearing, so we could still just, okay. We have one speaker card, Mr. Mayor.
There's only 40 in the action.
Right. I'm sorry, what? Right, the motion's still...
I'm sorry.
The motion's still on the floor, correct, Mr. McEwen?
Motion's still on the floor. You just need to hear the speaker before you take the actual action.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker card.
Okay, that's Mr. Pelka.
As the last time I was here and was asked to sit down and be quiet by you, Mr. Paris, I was trying to reiterate some of my feelings as to how I felt about the placement of the planning commission that you're planning to install. The oppositions that I have still stand, the one for Mr. Voss because of his affiliation with Walmart and the possible installation of the Walmart store up at 60th Street West and Avenue L. Also, I have an opposition to the gentleman who owns the Indian Restaurant because of the fundraising events he's held there for Ms. Marquez and also Mr. Grooms. So he should not be allowed on the planning commission also. Also, the real estate gentleman who works for Bazigian Realty, because of his association with Mr. Bazigian's family, should not be on the planning commission or should any...
I'm sorry, Mr. Pelka, but could you give us their names so the records call?
I do not have their names.
Okay.
But I do not, unfortunately, I don't know their names. Or any realtor, for that matter, should be on the planning commission because of possible improprieties of him at any point in time in designing or in the sale or of any kind of project that could be put before the council. Also, my opposition to Mr., on the fair board, my memory escapes me, is his name, Mr. Jacobs on the fair board, because of his association with the runners and Mr. Visco and you, Mr. Paris, and you're helping him get onto the fair board with your other associates. So that is basically my opposition to five of your seven people that you wanted to appoint to the planning commission, and I...
Well, I got two right, right? I got two right, right?
Well, I haven't wittened to them yet. So that's basically what I wanted to say, and thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pelka, just so you know, Mr. Jacobs is not on the fair board. He actually works for the state of California. He's the CEO for the fair. It's, just so you're clear.
But he was still appointed. Am I correct?
I believe he was hired by the state.
By, recommended by the people I mentioned?
Well, certainly not me. So, I don't know.
Well, I know, you put money into the, you're having your name on that building, you know, so.
Well, yes, I did. Anyone else?
No, that's, no more speaker's cards.
That's fair. Thank you, Mr. Pelka. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor.
Okay, any further discussion? Could we, are we have to close the public hearing and let's have any further discussion?
Yeah. The motion on the floor was...
It's not a public hearing, so you don't need to close it.
I see, okay.
The motion on the floor, if I remember it, was to take the, all the names except for, except for Mr. Burkey and Mr.?
Irvin.
Irvin.
Mm-hmm.
And that all of them would be appointed on the planning commission, and Mr. Irving and Mr. Burkey would take their seats on the planning commission officially in 30 days from today, I guess it would be, when the ordinance takes effect, because we did change, we had the second reading of the ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Smith?
That's correct.
And that's the motion on the floor, and it was seconded.
And they would continue to, they will sit on the planning commission, they'll simply not vote, the last two, until their appointment comes into place.
And that was the motion on the floor for the names in total.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, if we could, I did not get a chance to speak to all seven, but I, first of all, I want to go on record and tell you how much I appreciate you doing the weeding out, so to speak. Being newly elected to the council, I was actually toying with the idea of how I was going to move forward on the old system and making the recommendation, and I know that I was brought on to the planning commission via, through an application process. So I appreciate you doing some of the, I guess, farming or whatever we would, process of elimination. I did not have a chance to speak to one individual, so my preference would be to take each individual one at a time, because again, in my position, I feel it kind of an imposition to vote, given that I don't feel comfortable about one's background. So that would be my preference, rather than taking a wholesale lot of the group, would take them one at a time.
Just as a point of order, there would have to be a motion for separation.
Is there a motion?
As so stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Can we vote on the motion to separate?
Yes. Yeah, I personally, I'd like to make a statement before we separate. I think, I think taking them and, taking them apart one by one is not really what we were doing. We were looking at, as the mayor had stated before, each individual on their own merits, you know, don't, don't stand. It's the gestalt of the group, that the group as a whole is what's working, and that's why we made the motion as such, and I think that we should vote on them as a whole, as the motion stood, so.
Any further discussion on the motion to separate?
I'd just say that that's what I had thought we were going to do, was Mayor Paris was going to appoint them, and we were going to vote yea or nay on them as a group. That's why they were selected as a group, a team to work together, and that's what I was prepared to do. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily think we need to separate and vote on each and every one of them.
Well, obviously, we can be at odds with opinions. My thought process is, is we still have to ratify the individuals, at least my understanding with the change, it was for the mayor to appoint them and then the, the city council to vote on the seven, and almost like it's a preconceived idea that there's assumption made because someone selected seven people, then there's a wholesale vote. So I'm at odds, and if that's the case, then I would stand on record that my intention would be to abstain on all seven.
Well, okay. Anything else? Let's vote on the motion to separate. It's three, two yes, three no. Do you need a roll on that? Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor to confirm the mayor's nominations.
That's correct. Any further discussion?
If I may explain my vote in advance, as we discussed in our previous meeting, you and I are at odds over the methodology to select the appointments. I'm not going to rehash where we've been, but I'll be abstaining on this vote because of the issues I have with the process, and I'm not going to drag anything else up on that.
Okay. Anything else? Let's vote.
The vote is three to two to ratify the appointments to the planning commission. Thank you very much, members of the planning commission. And the reason, one of another reason why I chose abstain is I don't have any issues with any individual member, it was just simply the process. Thank you.
Now we have item two, which is the water conservation workshop. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, no, sir, Mr. Mayor.
And that's the, you're the presenter on that, Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, it's what we presented last time, because there wasn't language on you. Wanted to make a motion to appoint me as a chairman, as the ad hoc committee. I have, just recently, we've gotten some, some initial word from Palmdale that they're going to be interested also in being part of it and maybe part of the workshop also, so that's, I think that's a big positive. So I've met with staff several times now, since our last meeting.
Okay. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Mayor Paris? There was one thing that I did want to bring up. When I had gone through the agenda, and I would say three city council meetings ago, there was discussion on a couple of the items that was under the CC, which was like CC7 tonight and CC8, was except the interior street trees for maintenance by the city, et cetera. And CC8 was approved and except for maintenance, the working materials for the landscape improvements. At the time, someone had come up and spoke about, when are we going to stop putting in all these trees, and when are we going to start doing the zero scaping, and when are we going to start doing more conservation, water conservation? And I thought at that point, I thought, yeah, when are we going to do that? You know, and what does this have to do with this item? And after discussing and asking some questions, I spoke to Mark Moshegan about it, is that because we're, and I did this basically for your benefit out there, because I know there were people that had questions, I had questions about it. These are things that have already been accepted and approved, and we're basically tied in to go ahead and do this. But what we're talking, we're about to speak about is conservation in general, and that's where, from here on out, things are going to change in the agreements in new development and putting some things out there, that that's where we're going to start. We can't start with CC7 and 8. We have to start in the future. And so I just wanted to bring that up, and hopefully that was clear. If anybody has any questions, I understand that Randy Williams is the one that could answer those questions in depth, and Steve Dassler, I think, believe is, could do that also. But I just wanted to make that clear for the people at home and the people that are in the audience, that we're already tied into CC7 and 8, but future is what we're discussing tonight.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, not as much discussing tonight. I think we put this on just so, because we missed putting it on the agenda to appoint a chairman. But the workshop, that's one of the issues that we're going to be talking at the workshop, you know, whether we give a list of plants, and I think the city needs to take an assessment of their own districts too, you know, before we start making the citizens and the new development go along with what they need to do also. And that'll be in the future when we, we set the date for the workshop. I know we had discussed last time that the workshop basically is not going to be the study sessions that we've had in the past. It's going to be a little bit, maybe we'll have about a 10-minute presentation on information, but it's going to be, let's sit down and look at the shopping list and what do we want? Let's look, what color are we going to paint the house now?
I'm assuming one of the things you're going to do is develop a training program for, for citizens to, if you want to convert over?
Yes, yeah, we've been talking to staff about that, and there's a lot of ideas, and I think it's going to be really productive. I think we have to, a number of things we have to move on right away, and there's a lot of long-term stuff that's going to be very, very helpful.
Okay. Just so I'm, I'm knowing in my own head what's happening, is you're, we're essentially turning over this water problem to you and your committee.
Well, I don't know.
It's a big shoes. Well, the problem is, is as long as five of us remain accountable for it, which we ultimately are, no one's accountable.
Yeah, I think...
Because we're, we're coming up against deadlines.
Right.
And I need somebody that I know is handling this.
Right, absolutely. I agree with you on that. I think, and what staff has said before too, is we've had, staff has done a wonderful job. We have a lot of coalitions... job, we have a lot of coalitions in the valley, but nothing's getting done. And it takes the buy-in of the elected officials to spearhead this, and that's basically what this ad hoc committee is. We want to get the city of Palmdale on it also, so that we can, when it gets time, we can make it happen. And that's what needs to be done. The elected officials are at a point where we have to make the tough decisions.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion already?
No, I think we were just going to... Do we have to make, does he have to make the motion to appoint me as chairman?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so...
You have to make the motion to establish the ad hoc committee, and if you want to appoint someone as the chair.
Well, actually, what I would be doing is I would be appointing him and asking for ratification. Correct, right. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Now we have changing the time of the meetings for the Lancaster City Council. And last time we talked about it, you all wanted some options, so I kind of made it pretty simple, it would be two o'clock, three o'clock, or four o'clock. And I guess we should open that for a public hearing first?
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, but for public comment.
Public comment, okay. How is there a difference?
I think we take, I think by law, we take public comment on every action item, but then there's some things have an onus to have a public hearing. I don't see much of a difference sometimes.
A public hearing has additional noticing requirements.
I see. Okay, thank you. We have Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, I'm a little confused. I believe the event that occurred in early May was an election, not a coronation. Therefore, I think that the mayor cannot rule by public, by royal edict or by his own manifest, but has to go by the law, which is the Brown Act. And I believe that this Brown Act has been violated. And the Brown Act states that we have to allow public access and public, as much public participation as possible in the decision-making process of this city. Appointing commissioners in secret is not, is a violation of the public, of the Brown Act. And I've asked the district attorney and the county grand jury to investigate this, because what you have done is you have violated this by appointing only developers to this commission. Furthermore, I think what the direction the city council is taking is much like the Bush administration. It's operating in secret, it's going against the public wishes, it's using repression of free speech, and it's doing it all under the guise of the flag and God. And I think that that is not what the citizens of Lancaster want. I think that the, the best option, if people don't want to recall, is to contact the, the grand jury, because if more of these decisions are being made, and when you have a city council that states at the very front of the public comment that you cannot have unsolicited comments or criticism of staff or the city, or the city council or the mayor, that's an, that's a severe restriction of free speech. And you as a lawyer should know that. Under the First Amendment, no public bodies nor legislative bodies can abridge free speech. But that is what you're doing, and you're putting it here, and that's why I've asked for the investigation. But one thing I do want to say, I do appreciate your opposition to Proposition 98, I do appreciate the conservatory acts that you have passed, and I for one would hope, I've, I walk daily the Pride and Desert Woodland, I would help to lead, to lead a citizens' brigade with the help of the city staff and tools, to clean up that area, because it has a lot of broken glass, a lot of cans that haven't been picked up, and I would hope you would conserve the area on Avenue K between Forty-Fifth and Fiftyth. I know that you've done some development there, which has gone astray, because everyone's gotten foreclosure, and that is now a major site for gag taking. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hernandez, you can come back. Let's, let's talk.
Fine.
First of all, I, I want to be certain everybody understands, I really don't care how much criticism you may have of me, and how much you want to give me from the podium, I'm more than willing to accept.
Thank you.
And, but I do think that people should treat each other respectfully. I think that people's attitude and tone and demeanor is important, especially if the goal is to persuade. If, if the goal of people coming up to speak is to persuade us to their point of view, I don't know how we get there when, when what occurs has occurred in past meetings. I mean, some of the past meetings, I think, have been deplorable. The way we've treated each other as human beings has been deplorable. Last week, I did jump a little quick. I, I certainly am not withdrawing anything I said. I don't think it's the position of the speaker to be questioning us at that time. I do think there are times when you should question us, and I am making myself as available as I can be. I am meeting with everybody who wants to meet with me, I'm walking with people twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, every morning if I'm in town, I'm there. I think all of the, the processes that I go through in making decisions is something you are entitled to know about, and I'm more than willing to discuss them with you. I just don't think they should be discussed with you standing there and me sitting here.
Yes.
And, and I could have said that a lot better last week than I did. What I, what I was concerned about was meetings going back to the way they were, and that is something I'm, I'm not going to tolerate. I don't think that's right, I don't think you folks want it, I don't think anybody wants it. I think all of us, when we act that way, feel bad when we leave, and, and there's no reason for that. As to the openness of the Planning Commission, you know, there's people who have reported me to the Attorney General because I had a meeting at my house that involved the community, and it wasn't even a meeting, it was a barbecue, you know? Now, I understand that people have a right to do that, and, and that's perfectly acceptable. This idea that there are developers on the Planning Commission, I'm...
Real estate people.
There are real estate people, there's three people in real estate. This is about land use, you know, to, to have a, an effective planning commission, you people, we need people who understand land use.
That's why you should appoint people who, who wants to conserve it, like Sierra Club members or the Santa Monica Conservatory, to balance that out.
None of them applied.
I understand.
Now, there is nobody that's more concerned about conservation, I think, than I am. I mean, I'm a Republican environmentalist, you know, there's not too many of us, but I am certainly one of them. You know, the, what we're doing to, to our climate and what we're doing to the, the environment, I think, is, is a sin, that, that we should be doing something about. And, and that Planning Commission, the Architecture and Design Commission, Planning Commission, they're, they're going, they're expressed, going to be expressly told to do something about that in regards to solar, wind, things of that nature. This will be a different city.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
And I just want to say that, that I'm willing to work with you in any, any part of that, that as a citizen, I can help you out, and I understand people make mistakes and correct them, and I appreciate your honesty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would like you to get your application in.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pelco.
Well, I'm again adamantly opposed to the moving of the Planning Commission, or the council meeting down from six o'clock to four, or three, or two. You mentioned before that you say, well, people can watch this thing on the web. Well, if they're driving from their jobs down in Los Angeles up to Lancaster here, they can very well watch the council meeting on the web, you know? Or can they type in a email to the council to oppose something that is set at two o'clock in the afternoon, or three o'clock or four o'clock, because it's impossible. You know, unless they're going to be driving it down the fourteen and plowing into somebody, and they're trying to, you know, Bluetooth somebody, it's, it's, it's impossible. So, no, the meeting should not be moved from six o'clock, you know, earlier, and earlier they should be, if anything, up to seven o'clock. Now, you also mentioned that Beverly Hills has their council meeting, you know, most of the residents in Beverly Hills, you know, are able to, you know, live around there, and they work around there, and they're, don't, they're very far from, from their work, you know, unlike people up here who have to drive down below to work, because there's no available jobs up here. So, that's where I stand, and I think, well, most of the people here probably feel the same way I do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Pelco. Mrs. Hernandez?
Mayor, City Council. My name is Natalie Hernandez, and I live in four-three-three-five-two-forty-sixth Street West for sixteen years, and I'm an activist, I'm a proud Democrat, and I don't like what's going on sometimes. I have read that you have that meeting excluding two of the city council, Mrs. Menon and Mr. Ezilio, and I object to that, because when there's some meeting, whether it's in your house, it's supposed to be in the city hall, where we all can listen and see that. And so anyway, that's my objection. Are you supposed to include everybody, so we can know what's going on? Because some of you are real Republicans and some of modern Republicans, and I want to hear all about it, okay? And so I take, I take, I was very offended by that, and also, I don't want to be intimidated when I don't agree with you, because that's why I vote, and I'm a taxpayer. So, I feel intimidated sometimes, because you have a whole bunch of cops, they also have to respect us, because we pay their wages of everybody, right? Okay, so thank you very much for listening to me.
I don't think I could ever intimidate you, Mrs. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do want to, I want to be certain everybody understands, I did not have a meeting, I had a barbecue. There, there's a difference. And if I had had a meeting, you would be absolutely right, but that's not what we had. Okay, any other comments while we're on the subject? Good.
Well, I'll, I'll move that we, we change our time to three o'clock, I think that's sort of in between the two, three, and four o'clock, and gives us a...
Hold on, hold on, let's get it on the floor, nobody's voting yet, okay?
Go ahead.
Okay.
So, I think three o'clock gives us, you know, a lot of cities, some do it at twelve-thirty, some do it at eight-thirty in the morning. It gives, that gives time that if we have to change anything, we still can. I think the idea was, is that that was something that was a grave concern, we could always set that, take a break, come back, and it gives people time to come, come in and make their public comments in the, in the evening also. And I also think that the access on the, on the internet, I've been getting comments from people when they were up in Washington, and all over the place watching it live. So, I think three o'clock is probably, that's in between the two, three, and four, that would be my motion.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
In the information that we were given, they compiled information from other cities that they, they would meet at different times. And one of the notes there was that if they knew that there was going to be something that would be important to the public, then they would opt to change those meeting times to later in the evening, six, seven o'clock. Is there something that we could put on the website that if we saw that there was a lot of interest generated somehow? Well, I know we can get the phone calls, people will call, but is there something on the website that we could put on there? If we know ahead of time that we're going to have people who are going to be interested, that we could delay that meeting from three o'clock in the afternoon to six or seven o'clock, normal time? Just a question.
What, what I was envisioning is we would have the meeting where all the stuff that the folks aren't, you know, necessarily interested in. I mean, you, you don't have to sit through all this stuff. If there's items that you want to have a public discussion on, then that's what we'll do at six o'clock, we'll just move those items to six o'clock. That way, the public discussion could get done, and we're out of here by seven. And my concern is, is that not only the council, but the staff, we're having them make critical decisions to, that affect the lives of the people who live here, when they're fatigued. I mean, it makes no sense to me. This way, we get rid of the fatigue and preserve the public comment. I, I just don't see why there's a, why that's a problem. I mean, do you really like to see us go through the consent calendar, and, you know, any, anytime any citizen wants to comment on something, all they have to do is notify us, and we'll move that to the six o'clock phase of the meeting, and we won't vote on it until after the public comment is finished. The, I mean, it's not something most jurisdictions don't do, especially a city this size.
You know, when I was going through the notes, I think that we failed to, I did the math, I think there was fourteen cities, ten of the fourteen met at five-thirty or later. There was only four cities out of that fourteen that met earlier, and I believe three of those four were in the excess of two-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand people. I don't have the paper in front of me tonight, but I know we've rehashed this historically, not we as a body of the current five city council members, but there is a large majority of people that commute down to Los Angeles, and I think what's dynamic is having two-way exchange, because often at times, either ourselves or staff will make a, a comment, or for that matter, even be inclined to, to make a statement, whether it's a motion, and I think that at times, there's people that may be present that would like to comment. If we take a look at the clock right now, it's now seven o'clock, and we're just about finished with the, the agenda tonight. And hopefully, we work in harmony and things run very smooth from here on out over the next two years, and hopefully, I see quality work being done in, in the, in the way in which things are done tonight. When I made a decision, now this is a personal side, when I made a decision to run for city council, I took a look at the time commitment, because my commitment is to do the right things based on my personal time and my work time, and putting those two together. And had I known that we were going to converge two or three meetings after the new election and change the time, I might have probably rethought this, because I made a commitment to my employer that this would not create an imposition to the work that I'm currently done under contract. So I have a concern on that, that course, I have one on allowing us to have open communication to a large populace that commutes to Los Angeles for work each day. And then when we take a look at the real fact in the matter, when we take a look at ten of fourteen cities that are all starting their, their city council meetings at five-thirty, and when we take a look at the ones that opted out, they were either county seats, or they were, you know, several hundred thousand. So I, I would be opposed to starting the, the meeting any year earlier than, I, I think when I looked on that list, I think the majority was, the ten was at least at five-thirty. To me, that would be workable, but to, to move it up any sooner than that, I, I couldn't stand behind that.
I personally have a contractual obligation that ties me up between two and five P.M. on Tuesdays, and moving that would create impositions on five other healthcare professionals. I'm not sure I could actually juggle that schedule and make it work. I remember when we moved from seven P.M. to six P.M. for that reason, that we should start earlier, we should make our decisions when we're a little fresher, and we frankly couldn't come up with a reason for why we started as late as seven. But the key issue that came out when we had that discussion was, how, when should we start? And, and the overriding issue was, at what time could the maximum number of citizens participate? And given the unfortunate situation where we have a large commuter population, six o'clock seemed like the earliest people could be here. If we went down the road of having a midday meeting, the only possible, I, I could do anything before two P.M., anytime on Tuesday. What I think we could explore is potentially setting a, a maximum time limit on the council meetings, and, and possibly sliding to a third Tuesday, or, or continuing to a following evening, so that we aren't here till eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night. That, that's an alternative, and I don't know how that works with staff or with everyone else's time commitments here.
When you and I discussed this, I asked you about your schedule, you told me you could move it.
I'm sorry? I didn't do that?
You told me that you could move this, that your schedule, that it wouldn't interfere with work.
I told you that I would discuss it and see if we can move it.
So are we talking about moving it to a different day also?
No, on Tuesdays between two and five, I'm, I'm kind of locked in there, that's it.
So we would have to just move to a different day?
I'm, I'm, between two and, any other day, I'm tied up, eight to five, I am an hourly employee like most people in the city, that...
Before I ever put this up for public discussion, before I ever put it on the agenda, I came to you and asked you about your work schedule, and told you that, what I was intending to do... do, and you told me it was not going to be a problem.
I, I would disagree with that.
I'm a little bit disappointed that I'm now in a public meeting and I find that it is a problem.
It's a now, problem between 2:00 and 5:00. 12 o'clock works, 10 o'clock works, 12:30 works, 1 o'clock works. 2:00 and 5:00 doesn't work. I, I thought this was an open discussion, see what worked for everybody.
Mm-hmm. Is there a second?
I'll second you.
Uh, I guess we're getting more speaker cards, is that right? Okay. Ms. Goss?
This was the earliest that I could arrive. If you change the time, I'll not be able to come here. As a resident of Quartz Hill, one of the island communities, surrounded by a sea of Lancaster, anything that happens 300 feet from my home in the territory of Lancaster has a drastic effect, could have a drastic effect on my quality of life, my pursuit of happiness. The only way I can find out what is happening, what's on the agenda, is to attend these meetings. If you hold them in the afternoon when I'm at work, I can't find out. There's no way I can spend my work hours streaming video or emailing to find out what's going to happen. You, we all know that agenda items come and go up to the last minute. And I would never find out that it's going to be on, and it takes hours to get here. There's no way I can leave work at the last minute and make it here on time. I have friends that are right now commuting home, who are Lancaster residents, and they can't make it here on time. And I wasn't here to find out what you were discussing or what you were going to have, but the last time I was here, you were going to have two separate meetings. Is that still the deal? One meeting for your, you know, typical council stuff and then the other meeting for citizens' comments?
Yes, that, that would be the plan. Whenever there's comments, we would do that at 6:00.
Okay, well, how can we find out what happened if we're commuting home? How can we find out if we're at work, what's happening? And what comments and what suggestions and what all happened to make your decision? And can you make your decision without any concerns of anybody's comments or concerns? You know, and, um, if the public can't attend the afternoon meetings, decisions will be made that affect the citizens and their concerns will be totally ignored because it comes after the fact. And will the media, the newspaper, and the video broadcasting only cover the early session and totally ignore the citizens', the public's concerns and comments? Because do they want to come here twice? I don't even want to come here once, but this is the only way I can find out what's happening. Instead of helping the working citizens, this act discourages public comment and participation.
What about the people who work at night?
They have always been out of the loop. They will continue to be out of...
[laughing] Is it Ms. Hong?
The Hilton.
Ah. I'm such a klutz.
No, I was scrolling.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, first of all, I want to apologize for my casual appearance. We were here on a field trip tonight for my daughter earning a Girl Scout badge. No, no plans to participate in the meeting. Um, but I would agree with Mr. Silio, Mr. Mann, that, um, an evening meeting is much more available to those of us who live here in Lancaster. I work all day, and to make it by 6:00 is a great time to come to the meetings. But to get time off during the day is, would be virtually impossible because I have to take time off for other things in my life, such as my daughter and family things. So to come for a regular city council meeting would be virtually impossible. Um, also, I would like to, um, it needs to be held when people can attend. The majority of the people in this world work during the day and sleep at night. Yes, there are those few that work at night, granted, and I do know a few of them, but the majority of the people do work during the day, and this would be, this is a better opportunity at 6:00 to meet the majority of the people. Um, you mentioned the fatigue of the staff members. Um, what about giving them time off on the day of council meetings? Let them have a half-day so they can go home and take a nap. I personally love naps, power naps during the day, and they get me recharged for the night. And it would do your staff a great service, or the city staff a great service, to be able to go home and relax and put their feet up for a few minutes before they had to come to the council meeting. Also, I would be interested in knowing what the audience behind me feels about this. The, uh, and should have them polled and find out what, how, raise of hands. What do they think about the council meetings being held at 2:00 in the afternoon when kids are getting out of school and we're still at work? So I would encourage that the council keep the meetings at 6:00 in the evening so that the majority of the citizens here in Lancaster can attend the meetings and that there, there's nothing that is hidden or, um, hidden from our view. I thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're all aware that this is on television all week long. I mean, the possibility of hiding this is, is really...
Do we need another comment?
Yeah, you didn't finish your three minutes. Come on back.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have television. I do not have cable coming into my home, so therefore, I can't watch it 24 hours a day.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Smith, would you consider changing it to 5:00? Starting it at 5:00?
Uh, if that's the case, I withdraw my motion, and I'll make a new motion that, uh, we, uh, change the time to 5:00.
And I'll second that motion. Uh, shall we vote? The vote is four to one with Mr. Silio voting against it. Okay. The next item, uh, is also mine. The, uh, how do I do this, Mr. City Manager?
You can simply introduce discussion and then, um, give direction to staff to establish it. I think you need to explain the idea.
Okay, I, I actually want to, wanted it voted on and that that would be the, the way everything goes. On item CA4, any, uh, compensation that the mayor receives, any reimbursement that the mayor receives, any financial money going from the city to the mayor in any form, meaning if we go to Las Vegas for the weekend, uh, and the city pays for any of that and I seek reimbursement, any of that money would go into the scholarship fund. It'll be the mayor's scholarship fund. Anybody in the city of Lancaster, any, you know, high school student in the city of Lancaster will be eligible for it. And we would then award that probably this month when they, when they graduate. But that's how I want the, uh, finance department direct it. I, I will continue to, well, I haven't yet at all, but what I will do is I will seek reimbursement for any expenditures I make. But instead of reimbursing me, it would go into this fund maintained by the city, uh, and then I would direct it, uh, as to what, how the scholarship is divided up or given out. Is that how we would do it?
Uh, yes, we can do that. I do think you should take an action of the council to establish the fund.
Okay, and so what do we call it? The mayor's scholarship fund?
I think remove council member from the title and it would work just fine.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think the motion ought to be give direction to staff to establish the fund and to bring all the necessary action items back at a, at a future meeting. And, and we're not really certain exactly all the action items that'll be required to make that happen, but I...
Okay, but that's how we'd, so, so we're not going to vote on it today? Is that what you're telling me?
No, no, I, I think you can take a vote.
Okay.
To get at least concurrents in the, in the process.
Okay, so that would, that would be the...
But it's the direct staff to put this all together.
That would be the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote. And it passes unanimously. And the next item is, uh, Councilwoman Marquez.
Okay, CA 101 is to establish a policy for citizens to donate to the National Motto Display, which is "In God We Trust" that we'd like to put on the back wall. And I just wanted to direct staff to take such actions. And, um, I was thinking, can we put that on the website where people will be directed where to make donations to? And, um, I have had quite a bit of, uh, emails, phone calls here at a city, um, hall that have let me know that they're much in support of that and wanting to donate towards that.
If that's your wish, we could put it on the website. We already have a 501(c)(3) and we would just simply designate where to, um, send the funds.
So are we going to need a motion for that? Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, I think it'd be appropriate to have a motion, and I think you ought to also deal with the concept of what are you going to do with excess funds?
One thing that was brought up and suggested was that we make lapel pins also that would include "In God We Trust" and Lancaster, California. And we're looking at maybe making a design for that also. I've, uh, mentioned that to several people and they've been interested in that and would like to see that happen. It's something that we can use, um, if, uh, to, to give those out as, as gifts. And, um, so I've gotten quite a bit of feedback on that.
City of Victorville does that?
Okay, I'll, I'll also move. Do, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and I guess I'm getting ahead of myself. Any public comment? Uh, we have Denise Josephson.
As she's walking out, can I get clarification on one point? I don't recall, um, is this going to be strictly from donated funds or, or could there potentially be taxpayer dollars involved in the, in the design and installation of, of the motto? I don't, I don't recall what we decided.
We wanted to go with donations. We wanted to make sure that we didn't use taxpayer money for this. And, um, I'll be for, one of the first ones donating to that fund.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Mayor, council members, thank you very much. I am basically here to be in support of this. As a resident of Lancaster, to be honest, this room looks very barren without those words up here. And I just came here in support of that, and I had understood that maybe there was some resistance to it, is there, at this point? Yes.
Well, not up here, but maybe out there.
If that being the case, may I speak briefly? I prepared something, um, just from historical facts regarding this, and I thought maybe it might be helpful. Um, the words "In God is Our Trust" originated from the Star Spangled Banner, our national anthem. Yes, there is more to this song than the one verse we hear at ballgames. Originally named in defense of Fort McHenry, the Star Spangled Banner was written by Francis Scott Key during the War of 1812. After Fort McHenry had been repeatedly attacked by the British during the night, Key was relieved to see the American flag still waving in the morning dawn. He wrote this song following that event. "In God We Trust" first appeared on U.S. coins as early as 1864 and has been on all U.S. currency since 1955. In 1956, "In God We Trust" was made the national motto by act of Congress. What had been happening in just the 17 years prior to this important decision? Pearl Harbor, World War II, the Holocaust, the start of the Cold War, and dangerous tensions between superpowers Russia and the United States, and the Korean War, in which the United States aided the U.N. and South Korea against Communist North Korea. Communism was a quick-spreading method of government which presented itself as equality for everyone with no private land ownership and an almost utopian rule by the Communist Party. The truth as we know was starkly different. Communism meant government-controlled lands, government-controlled businesses and economies, and cruel dictatorships, which were quick to efficiently squash any opposition. It also eliminated moral absolutes, that is religious-based responsibilities and freedoms, making the only absolute communism, the rules of which changed continually to benefit the party or who was in charge. Capitalist America, with its God-given individual freedoms and responsibilities, existed in opposition to this frightening method of government. It is not surprising that "In God We Trust" was made our national motto at this time. This was a reminder to all that government existed to help the people, not vice versa. Is this a patriotic issue? Yes. Because of the beliefs of those who have gone before us, we are the country we are, we have the freedoms we do, we have the right to express our opinions without fear of torture or death. We all benefit from these same freedoms as a country and as individuals. And the loss of these freedoms, which we now take for granted as a country, would result in the downfall of our country. For the benefit of Lancaster and the United States, I hope the city of Lancaster will install this display. It will serve as a reminder to us all that what we now have has not come easily. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Phillips, it says CA4.
Ms. Phillips, you meant on this item?
Yes, I'm sorry, I said on the...
No, that, that's okay. I figured you did.
No, I didn't card. Did I make a call or...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I had to clarify that you wanted to speak on this one.
Well, you sort of are, but you haven't filled...
That's okay.
You, you haven't filled out the card, and, you know, I'm sorry to be a stickler, but the card needs to be filled out. Uh, so can you fill it out after you speak? Would you do that?
That's how I filled out the card last time.
Uh, and you got it by me, you know? Sometimes I make mistakes. Okay, cool, come on down.
I'm a reluctant activist. I was not planning on speaking tonight. Uh, this is a little...
I'm sorry, we need your name and address.
I think you need my name, but I don't think you need my address. Is that correct?
Well, you didn't fill out the card, that's why I need the address. Do you live in, uh, do you live in Lancaster or something?
I live in Lancaster, but I'm not sure for how much longer.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Debbie Phillips. I live at 43747 David Street.
Thank you.
93535. Um, I've been circulating a petition that basically says that, uh, we, the undersigned, undersigned citizens of Lancaster respectfully request that the council rescind its May 13th decision to display "In God We Trust" on the wall behind the council. Uh, city councillor, council member Marquez contends that the sole purpose for displaying the slogan is to promote our city's Americanism, national pride, and patriotism. There are many slogans that promote these ideals without referencing God. We ask that the council consider an equivalent secular slogan, and I have a list of 30 of those. Actually emailed this to you late Friday, Mayor Perez. If possible, we recommend that the council engage the citizens for additional slogan suggestions. Such actions by the council would dispel any real or perceived church and state controversies, promote goodwill between the council and the citizens it serves, enable a united public display of our community's Americanism, national pride, and patriotism. As I told one of the newspapers who called me about this last time, it's not that I don't believe in God, it's not that I'm not a believer, I just feel that it doesn't belong here in this venue where we all come to participate in the democratic process. We have churches to go and worship in. I feel that it's very separate, as did many of our founding fathers. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Uh, Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Come on.
Great.
Thanks. Ms. Williams, you didn't fill it out either.
I apologize for that. I did want to hold you up. Um, I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but then I felt the need to say a few things. Councilmember Mar, Marquez, I always get it wrong.
Marquez rhymes with carcass.
I remember that. Um, I, I want to say two things. I want to speak in defense of those who have spoken against "In God We Trust," first of all. I think what happened was that when you made that suggestion that night, I think that the members of this community were coming out of a situation where they felt so much had been shoved down their throats and so much had been told to them as opposed to them being listened to. And so when the idea came up and you talked about the bare wall and I suggest we put "In God We Trust" up there, I think that a lot of people basically felt, here we go again, someone is telling us what needs to be there as opposed to saying to us, the wall is bare, I'd like to hear from the citizens, why don't you give us some suggestions? Now that we have arrived at the fact that it is going to be "In God We Trust," I speak in favor of that. I think that what the mayor said before about the chaotic atmosphere in this room in the past, the fighting, the friction, the hatred in some respects, um, needs to be stopped and it needs to be, uh, curtailed. And I think there is nothing wrong with having a slogan that we put on everything else in "God We Trust" there to remind us of diplomacy, the reason why we should be here, the... "In God We Trust" there to remind us of diplomacy, the reason why we should be here, the unity of the community, and the very fact that that is something for us to meditate on as we sit back there and remember why we are here as a group. But I just think it was the way that it was presented at that meeting that made people feel, here we go again. We're not being given an opportunity to have critical input. The idea has been put out there, and it's going to be that way and nothing else. And so I think that in the future, I think that your suggestion was excellent, but I think that if we're gonna be sensitive to the pain and some of the hardships that the community has gone through in the past, that we need to remember, at least make them feel that they had an investment in what was going to be so prominently displayed on their wall. But "I truly believe in God We Trust" is a wonderful slogan to put up there. And if we did trust in God, half the chaos that we have experienced on both sides of the aisle would never have happened. It's just the way it was put forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I say something?
Yeah, of course.
You know, I understand and probably, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Williams. And probably because in my mind, I mulled over, you know, this blank wall for two years and came up with, you know, "In God We Trust," and had actually seen it done in some other cities, and being the patriot that I feel that I am, and it being our national motto, that's just naturally what came to my mind. I'm not a theologian, but, and this is how I explain "In God We Trust," and because of our religious freedoms in this land, God is whoever you determine your God is. My God is the God of the Bible. That's who I think of when I see "In God We Trust." But I know that there are a lot of other people that God to them is a different entity, a different person, and sometimes themselves. And I'm not being sarcastic with that. Some people do not, they say they do not believe in God, and that's their privilege. But when you see "In God We Trust," in my mind, if you don't believe in God, then you are your own God. You worship yourself. So you trust yourself. Now that's, you know, I'm not a theologian, and I'm not gonna say that's the way to explain that, but that's what I say to people that say, I don't have a God, but we have religious freedom in this country. And that's what our national motto is about. But I do appreciate those others. But this is the United States of America, and it is our national motto. And as much opposition as I have gotten, I've gotten three times as much support for it. And I'd be glad to share those phone calls and emails with anybody. And, you know, maybe it could have been presented differently. I appreciate that, I really do. But it was something in my mind that should have already been on that wall two years ago, and that's just how I think about it. I appreciate it, though. And, you know, going back to what you said, the pain that has come from both sides, so to speak, in this chamber. I remember about a year ago, standing there, speaking on an issue, and being told to shut up, sit down, booed and hissed. And I thought, I'm gonna get hit in the back of the head. So, you know, it's come from both sides, you know, but there needs to be respect from those people out there for that person who's standing at that podium speaking. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. We have some additional speaker cards. I'm letting this get ahead of myself on this. The way this is supposed to work is, my understanding is that we have public comment, and then we have the council speak. And so we've gotta figure out a way to work these cards so that that procedure is kept to. Tonight, it's not gonna be an issue. I'll let whoever wants to speak, speak. But in the future, we need to stay with the formality of it. I once had a judge tell me that it's in the formality that we find justice. I think that's probably true. Mr. Smith, did you want to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe we are referring to due process, and it is indeed a bulwark of our justice system. Some speakers have mentioned about "In God We Trust" being our national motto, albeit that is true since 1956, when it was actually instilled as such. However, the Congressional Act in 1956 did not remove the prior one from 1782, when we were founded in the first place after a long and grueling battle with those that would oppress us. Ms. Marcus, you had mentioned about putting up the seal of the United States. I'm presuming you mean the overs and not the revers. And in either case, you will not find the words "In God We Trust." You will find "E Pluribus Unum: From Many, One." And that's really what this is all about. That's why we're here. From many, one. "In God We Trust," although a very good motto, tends to exclude some. And inasmuch, I believe it's inappropriate for this particular venue. You had mentioned that people can believe in God as they see fit. It is their privilege. I disagree. It is their right, a right that we have continually fought for and continue to this very day. If it must be a federal motto instead of a city one perhaps, then let it be the one we've had since the very beginning. E Pluribus Unum. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Good evening. Ms. Marcus, you had mentioned that if someone doesn't, if I'm reading you right, hearing you right, someone doesn't believe in God, then they worship themselves. I personally find that offensive. I believe everybody has their own concept of God, their own higher power. You said that "In God We Trust" should be back there because the wall is blank. I agree, the wall is blank. What's wrong with the city motto? What's wrong with pictures of the city putting it back there? We've got some wonderful patriotic pictures of the city that could go back there. Why does it have to be "In God We Trust"? That's all I wanted to say.
I think that concludes all the speakers we have. Do we have any other council discussion? I have something to say. You know, democracy is the will of the majority. I believe that this city is a city that believes in God, and I make no apologies for that, and I'm not running from this in any way. It is not because it's our national motto, it's because I believe that it is in fact "In God We Trust," and that's why I'm voting for it. So if that offends anybody, I apologize that they're offended, but let's not have any mistake as to why I am voting for it. Thank you. Can we vote?
Is there any card?
One more card?
We might have one more. Person who turned a card in, he said. What's your name, sir?
Fernando Mendeville.
What's that?
Fernando Mendeville?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mendeville, you put it down as a non-agendized item, and that's coming up later.
Now, what does that mean? All I know is I just have some--
You can speak. You can go ahead and speak.
Okay, we have to change the title.
This is my first time here, so I just need to say what needs to be said, and then I'll leave, if that's okay.
Hold on one second. Don't start a time yet.
Did you want to speak on this agenda item?
Regarding?
Regarding us forming a citizen's ability to donate to the national motto going up.
I can do that.
No, no, is that what you wanted to speak? Because you have another card in here to speak on Antelope Valley Water Community Health.
If I do this, will I be able to speak on that subject?
Oh, sure. You can. You just have to fill out--
Give me three minutes regarding this.
Yeah, you'll have to fill out another card.
I'll finish this, okay? First of all, I don't know you, but I'm proud of you because you're taking a stand because you're not ashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ. I'm proud that you're my sister in Christ. That's number one. I third the motion for "In God We Trust." I don't know you. I've been in this community since 1999.
And you don't know me?
I don't. I know of you, but what I've heard from you, what I've heard about you regarding the gem owners, is that, a lot of good things about you, that's what I've heard. I don't listen to gossip. I'm not here to please any man or any woman. I'm not here for that. I'm here to speak directly, first and foremost, to you. That is all. The first time, the only time I've ever seen you in church was when Baca was here in Lancaster and Steve Baker was there when you were there. And I had a question. I didn't ask Bishop Burns, I didn't ask Gus, Gus Kamach, I didn't ask Steve Baker, I didn't ask anybody. I didn't even ask your mother a couple of weekends ago at Jet-Hawk Stadium, but I wanted to go ahead and ask you a personal question. I know that she's not ashamed of Jesus Christ. I've got a question to ask you. Are you personally saved?
I normally don't answer questions from here, but I will answer that one. Yes, I am.
That's all that matters. That's why you're sitting where you're at. Not because of all the money that you have, not because of all your wealth and everything else. God, by His grace, has placed you at the right place at the right time for you to do something that needs to be done, that money can't buy. And that's number one, for you to take a stand for Christ. That's why you're sitting where you're in. I know that your time is limited. I know it is. I know you've got about 24 months left for now. But if you take a stand for what is right, and if you're not a man-pleaser, what you say and what you do is who you are away from here, regardless of who's, regardless of how many cameras or what have you, you're gonna stay there for a very long time, regardless of the opposition behind me, regardless. God placed you there for one reason, for one reason only, actually for two reasons. Number one, to be His ambassador. Number two, to do this community some good. Okay? To my understanding now, I don't know anybody else here, but the only one that I know that is bold about her faith is right there. Okay? Now, I don't know about these people. I don't. Only God does. But I do know this, a house divided, a government divided cannot stand. And I'm gonna encourage every one of you men and women that are in this position that you know that you're where you're at right now because God placed you there, this man needs you, this woman needs you. Now, if there's some of you that are here because you're man-pleasers, because you're hypocrites, okay, in time, you'll go ahead and you'll have your office, but you'll fade. But he's still gonna stay there, guaranteed. Guaranteed. I've seen your future. I know where this man is going. Okay? I don't even know this man. I have no desire to. But I do know this, if something has to be said, something has to be done. And when it comes to "In God We Trust," you take a stand regardless of what anybody else thinks or says. And if that wealth that God has blessed you with is for Him, use it, okay? And do whatever you gotta do to put that sign up on top and take a stand. Now, I'll come back in three more minutes.
Thank you. Okay, shall we vote? You ready to vote? It's unanimous. Okay. The last item is CA 102. After meeting with the court and meeting with the bar association, there's something that is not well-publicized. Our courthouse is the busiest courthouse in the county. We have the biggest civil calendar in the county. We now no longer are allowed to do civil trials in the Antelope Valley that are over four days long. Well, I've never, it's hard for me to do an opening statement in four days sometimes. Not really. But four days, it's ridiculous. You're not gonna get a jury trial done in four days with any meaningful results. The criminal cases are also being sent down throughout the county. And the reason for that is because there's judges that need to be appointed, there's positions that are open. And so what I'm asking the council to do is to authorize me, on behalf of the City of Lancaster, write the governor and ask that he recognize the emergency up in the Antelope Valley at the Lancaster courthouse and fill at least two of those appointments with all due haste. And so that's the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. Does we have discussion?
There's no cards, so--
How many open judge positions do we have?
In the county, it's in double digits now. For whatever reason, the governor is not moving with any due haste. We just lost Judge Jackson. Judge Jackson has been appointed to the Court of Appeals, and I think he takes that seat on June 4th. Or at least, that's when the hearings are. So it's gonna get worse, it's not gonna get better, and he just has to act. You know, it sounds like it's a budget-money-saving way. You just don't appoint him, and so then they don't spend the money. As a result, justice grinds to a halt. What it does to our deputies is, if the case is up here, a deputy can leave the field, spend a half hour on the stand, go back to the field. If it's down in Long Beach or Los Angeles or wherever else they send these things, he's out of the field the entire day, sometimes two or three days because he has to wait. And I've been in trials where that's occurred. It really is an obscene waste of man-hours that we literally take them right off the street, and they're not there to protect us. Okay. So did I have a second? And then, shall we? Let's vote. It's unanimous. City manager, do you have any announcements?
No, sir.
You're not throwing us a barbecue now that you got that contract, or?
I couldn't help it. I think after we've made the decision, it's okay.
My wife didn't come tonight, so I thought I could get away with that. City clerk, any announcements?
This portion of the agenda allows individuals the opportunity to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Please complete a speaker card you'll find at the back of the council chambers and put down the subject you would like to address. State law does prohibit the council from taking action on any items that are not on the agenda. Your matter will be referred to the city manager. You will be allowed three minutes to state your concerns. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on as you start, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other citizens their chance to speak to the council as well. And if needed, council will comment on your concerns under council comments. Thank you.
Thank you. The first speaker is David Paul. I'm glad to see you recovered.
Good evening.
You recovered from your surgery? Everything's good?
Yes, sir, pretty well. I have state-of-the-art parts in me now, so I'm feeling pretty good.
True.
And I wanted to start by saying, first of all, that I'm one of the people who enjoys coming here, so whatever time of day I'm free, I will always come. Ms. Marcus, I saw a thing, I've been laid up watching a lot of TV, there's a thing called the doodle bug, and it cuts out really nice designs to put whatever you want up there, and it's probably economical, so, you know, it's 250 bucks or something like that, we could get one of them and put our "In God We Trust" on the wall. I like that. But, you know, I know that people have opposition to this slogan because there's a wide variety, like you talked about, opinions of what God is. This is what I know for sure. There is no greater joy in life than to love and respect the law. And in the truest sense, God is the law. In the civil sense, you are the law, and it is good that people love and respect you. I spoke before about what love is. My friend and mentor, John Bradshaw, says that love is not so much an emotion as it is decision and commitment. And I believe that. And you can be committed to the process and disagree and still have that love. So that's what I would offer as a suggestion. There is no greater joy than to love and respect the law. I came through this ordeal with my hip. I put it off for years, and it was a good thing because this is how things work out sometimes. The state-of-the-art part wasn't available a couple of years ago, and I should have probably had that done. So now I waited, and I have the best, and I survived, and I came home, and I was feeling very good about myself having survived the ordeal, and my little kids were bickering, and I took it as an opportunity to lay down the law and to establish the pecking order or reestablish. And I told them, I said, you know, I don't really wanna listen to this bickering that I have nothing to do with and is not my fault. And my little seven-year-old looked up at me without a hesitation and said, I'm your So I think that's how it is. You know, we have to be aware that the decisions we make here affect us all, and I'll tell you what, I don't have any more to say tonight. I'm just glad to be here, and I love you all, I'm committed to you all, I love this process. I'm just glad to be here and I love you all, I'm committed to you all, I love this process, I love the opportunity, I love the chance to be here, and it is just a wonderful time for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Is it Mr. Jones?
Reginald Jones.
Reginald Jones.
You didn't answer that.
Okay. He's not here. Mr. Mendel?
I get three minutes, right?
Yeah, but you gotta do it on something else.
This is, I'm going to pretend for a second, nobody's behind me. There's no council, it's just you and I. All right?
Well, that's actually kind of rude.
Isn't it right?
That's kind of rude.
Just for now, just for now, just for a second. I'm going somewhere with this. About three and a half weeks ago, I got a call from Gus Camacho, former client, a dear friend. And after that conversation, I called Steve Mellicott, my office sits right directly behind his, I've been there since February of last year. And it got my attention, and then what I did is I called a councilwoman from Roseman. And when I spoke to Kathleen Shore, got my attention, anything had to do with chloramines. When that got my attention, what I did is that I put the brakes on my radio call, on my radio program. I host a health and fitness program, Monday through Saturday, Medical Monday. I basically pair up 32-plus years of health and fitness with some of the best people here in the Antelope Valley. On Medical Monday, I have Dr. Gelfand, Dr. Ray Hashimi, and a few others. On Trainer Tuesday, I have the best trainers. On Weight Loss Wednesday, I have some of the best nutritionists and dietitians. On Erbait Thursday, I pair up with Cheryl from the Ho Weeterie and other people in alternative medicine. Fitness Friday, the Gym Owners. And on Saturdays, I host Born Again Bodies, a biblical approach to nutrition and exercise. And when I heard about this, I came off the air, I left, and I went and I prayed and I fasted, and I said, "Lord, how do I deal with this? It's not about chloramines, okay? Show me scripturally what is happening to this community here in the Antelope Valley." I don't know it all, thank God, but I do know this, I do know the body, okay? And I heard you at 7 o'clock say that you are a con, what is that, a conservationalist? Is that correct? Something like that. Don't ask me to say it three times because I'm not going to do it. So what I do is I like to read to you personally what I saw, and now that I know who you are, that you are saving, that you're not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, let me take you back about 560 years before the birth of Christ, to the present and to your future. All right? If you do this. This is out of 2 Kings, Chapter 2, verses 19 through 22. "And the men of the city," Lancaster here, the Antelope Valley, "said unto Elisha the mayor, Behold, I pray thee, the situation of this city, the Antelope Valley, is pleasant as my lord see it, but the water is not; it's no good, and the ground barren, infertile. And he said, Bring me a new creuse, and put salt therein. And he brought it to him. And he went forth into the spring of waters," that's you, "and cast the salt in there, and said, Thus saith the Lord, I have healed these waters. There shall not be from there any more death or barren land. So the waters were healed here in the Antelope Valley, and to this day according to the sayings of Elisha which he spaketh." Now, before you cut me off, I'm going to stand firm on this. In front of you are a lot of people, besides my radio program, there's also medical specialists, successful authors. Last week, I was just actually paired up, okay, with an awesome author. Okay? Now, here's what I want to go in and I want to tell you. Regardless of the opposition regarding chloramines, it's not about chloramines, okay? The water in the Antelope Valley is already poisoned. If you add chlorine, all you're going to do is add to it. You are in a position right now to put a stop to it and simply just say, you know what, enough is enough. Okay? Now, with that said, let me just say this to you. Thank you for the deeping.
I'm sorry, sir.
That's it?
You have to follow the rules.
Okay, great. We'll finish later.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
Ms. Gus?
Lancaster will not benefit from the building of two supercenters at the intersection of Avenue L and 60th Street West because it is five miles away from the freeway. Stores located near a freeway may draw in out-of-area customers, but a store far from a freeway has only the residents from the local neighborhood to draw from. The potential customer base in this neighborhood is limited to begin with, and they can only buy so many supplies. The neighborhood is overstocked with unsold and foreclosed homes that won't be legally occupied anytime soon. According to foreclosure.com, as of yesterday, the 93536 and the 93551 ZIP code, the area surrounding where this proposed stores will be built, have 3,672 homes that are currently in foreclosure, pre-foreclosure, bankruptcy, or have a tax lien. When people face foreclosure or other financial problems, they do not spend their limited funds maintaining their homes and yards. This brings down the value of the surrounding homes and the whole neighborhood suffers. The customer base is further reduced because abandoned or unoccupied homes do not house customers. Retail stores competing against supercenters are closing in record numbers, leaving fewer shopping alternatives for residents. Last year alone, 4,500 retail stores closed, and analysts predict as many as 7,000 additional retail stores could close this year as consumers cut spending and retailers struggle to finance their inventories. Saturating the Antelope Valley with two more supercenters eats into the sales of the four existing supercenters. Cannibalizing same-store sales can close existing stores, leaving abandoned monolithic-sized buildings. The city will not benefit with the addition of these supercenters as shoppers transfer their patronization from one Lancaster store to another. And the sales tax money the city collects will remain the same. But the costs associated with the supercenters in policing services, road repair, and other infrastructure maintenance will only drain Lancaster's already limited funds. In these uncertain economic times where the customer has to watch every dollar, building two more supercenters, selling the same old stuff, seems to me to be economic suicide. The Avenue L and 60th Street West location cannot economically support one supercenter, let alone two.
Thank you.
Mr. Irvin, the planning commission has already passed, so I can't have you speak on that. Where'd you go? Okay. It's already passed on the agenda.
Okay, someone had said something, and I wanted to respond.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Lacy was on the walk this morning, and we want to thank the Air Force for giving us a B-2 flyover on the mayor's walk this morning.
My pleasure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Thomas C. Lacy, and I have been a resident of Lancaster for 32 years. I am currently serving on the California Senior Legislature as senior assembly member. Now, I am here to propose that we, of the cities of Lancaster and Palmdale, organize an event to be known as Railroad Days, or on about the 10th of May, every year. Now, this event is a federal event celebrated on that date. Both Palmdale mayors and Lancaster mayor, and Frank Roberts, and also the Southern Pacific Railroad wants to be in on this event. They told me that if we submitted a prospectus to them, they will back us in this event. Now, incidentally, the railroad named this town, or named this area Lancaster. So Frank Roberts asked me to present this to the council tonight, that it is a well event. We attended the event in Fullerton, which was a three-day event, which was a very good thing for the city of Fullerton. And we should have the same thing here because this is a railroad town, and we should have an event in that honor that actually started this town because of our artesian wells that furnished all the water for the steam engines which were coming down to Hattaway Loop. Now, that is our proposal, and we would like to put it before the committee for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Okay, that closes the public business from the floor, and we have a report from council members Cilio and Mann on the recent trip to Las Vegas. Is that correct?
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask our Economic Development Director to start out.
Okay.
And then...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Paris, and members of the council. We want to give you a brief recap on a meeting that was held last week and attended by some members of the staff, a couple of council members. This was a meeting in Las Vegas for the International Conference of Shopping Center Officials, and it draws annually about 50,000 people in that business. They're split up between 42% developers, 32% retailers, and it is said, at least by CSC, that 50% of the retail leases that are signed in the United States are either signed or conceived at that convention, so it's an important place to be if you're interested in attracting retail. My presentation will be as specific as I can, but I need to tell the council that this information is confidential and competition-sensitive, so I won't be as candid as you might hope. But these are all ongoing negotiations, and you can understand the need for confidentiality. Retail attraction is very important in the city of Lancaster, it's one of our top goals on our Economic Development Strategic Plan. Revitalization of commerce is one of our four strategic pillars. That includes bringing new retail into the town, which of course will expand our tax base and generate more revenue to fund general fund expenditures. Revitalization of commerce also includes revitalizing the downtown. Our concepts for success as far as attracting retail are concerned are threefold. Number one, we want to nurture relationships with developers and brokers. What we found is that this business happens through shopping center developers and real estate professionals, retailers, that we need to have good relationships with. And then finally, we found that the entire program runs around the needs of the anchors. An anchor, of course, would be a large department store that in essence drives the traffic to a shopping center. It's very difficult to have success in a shopping center if you don't have one of those anchors. Our challenge is that this year versus last year, the national real estate recession certainly has taken its toll in the Antelope Valley. The decline in housing values has produced lower demographics, so it makes it harder to sell the Antelope Valley to retailers. Having said that, I was delighted with the interest expressed by the folks that we talked about. I'm sure the councilmen can add. Let me draw an analogy of the role for the redevelopment agency and center. For many years, at 10th Street West and Avenue K, we had a vacant facility. We lost the Sears stores there, and it was almost 15 years, nothing happened at all. Finally, we were able to put together the two property owners and attract a couple of anchors. In this particular case, it was Lowe's and Winco. As soon as those anchors had made a commitment to that site, we were very fortunate to have a number of restaurants that the community had been interested in for a long time. Of course, everybody knows now we have Chili's, Panera Bread, Rubio's, Big Tuna, Farmer Boys. And that's how it always happens. That's how the business has been forever. And so you need to understand, our goal, of course, is to attract those retail anchors. Our convention goals were quite specific. We wanted to raise general Lancaster awareness, so we wanted to disseminate marketing information at the conference. And we did this, we put this up on the screen for the citizens to see. Go ahead and flip to the next one. You can see, we've actually created a map in the interior of this document that shows direct retail nodes that are broken up, you know, based on freeway visibility, 10th Street West corridor. And we have a listing of 12 separate projects that I'm happy to tell you are all moving ahead at different levels of speed. These relationships with the shopping center developers are very important. They weigh very carefully the amount of investment they want to make in this community and in this marketplace, it's, you know, a decision they don't make lightly. Specific accomplishments at the conference started off with over 2,000 emails that we sent out to brokers, to developers, and then specifically to retailers. We were able to set up 10 separate meetings with 20 different individuals. I'm here to tell you that there's five major anchors that are specifically interested in proceeding with the city of Lancaster. We're excited about that because that'll create retail synergy. One of the terms that we heard is retail, crisp retail epicenter is what the developers are looking for. Obviously, they have their own nomenclature, but that synergy is very important to establish. We have a great deal of east side developer interest, that's an area that we think is underserved in this community. We have interest out there from a giant general merchandise store as well as a family restaurant. And then we had an additional meeting that was tied to our last council meeting when we discussed the possibility of a sign for the Lancaster marketplace. That developer was there and a meeting was held, a discussion was had where a decision was made that the city should control that sign in cooperation with the different development interests. We did that. Finally, to follow up, we're going to continue to nurture these relationships. We're going to work with city departments to maintain a business-friendly reputation. Of course, you know about that award. I'm happy to tell you that our planning director attended this conference for the first time, and I'm sure it won't be the last. We really do recognize that it's a true partnership between the different departments in the city to make this happen. Obviously, there are a number of needs that need to be balanced. And then finally, there's a fall conference that we'll be ready to do. Last year, we were able to attract a restaurant based on that conference, and we're going to update our website into a whole new retail side of that. On a separate subject, but because I had your time, this is a copy of an ad that will start running in the San Fernando Valley Business Journal, the Los Angeles Business Journal, talking about our business-friendly city award. And this, of course, is more industrially based, primarily to areas that would look at expanding in this area, but we wanted to share that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure the councilmen would have information to add.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Boy, Vern, you didn't leave us much. I do want to dovetail a little bit of that. The ICSC convention is ground zero of shopping center leasing, and nobody thinks about shopping center leasing unless you want to dwell up shopping centers and are looking for tenants. Well, that's what our city is trying to do. We're fortunate this year in that we have approved projects, we have developers who are ready to build, and they're looking for major tenants. City staff did an excellent job of arranging meetings with the appropriate potential tenants. They were fruitful. The mix of staff members they brought, for instance, Brian as a planning director was able to answer some questions they have that frankly, we probably wouldn't have been able to answer on the fly. It's not just speaking to a tenant and saying, "Can you make money in Lancaster?" What you have to answer is, "Why Lancaster as opposed to Santa Clarita or Palmdale or anywhere else?" And the information that we brought to them and were able to present, the mix of staff, obviously having elected officials, helps, they know that developers have our support, that we are a business-friendly city. It's very helpful when they say, as Vern mentioned, there's a sit-down restaurant that's interested to go in on the east side, they say, "Well, why should we come to Lancaster?" When we can hand them the numbers that say, "Our sales tax from sit-down restaurants is much lower than the county average." That gets their attention. That's the kind of thing that piques their interest and moves us up the food chain a little bit in their decision-making process. I was, been to ICSC a few times, three or four years now, over my six years on the council, and I would have to say that this was probably the most fruitful in terms of the staff we brought, the meetings we had, and frankly, the market that we have with the developers itching to build, that their projects are ready to go. And that puts us at an advantage compared to other cities that say, "Well, we have this lot, we're looking for a developer." Puts us head and shoulders above them. I think we played off of that. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that I wanted to speak about was, we actually split up. There was, both over the two days, there was times when Ed would go one way with the city staff as well as myself going in additional direction. I know that both myself and Mark was present along with Kelvin in relationship to the sign. It was very interesting to hear the other take from, just the synergy from the developers that were present that spoke about the signage and their concern about making sure that the city kept control of the sign. Now, that was pretty clear conversation, I think, that all three of us heard. So I'm not quite for sure what Ed was doing that portion of the day. I think he was with Vern and I believe Brian went a different direction where there may have been a conflict of interest with what I do as far as work. The second day, both Vern and myself specifically made a point to seek out and look at the, I guess, the retail part of the restaurant chains. And I know there was a good exchange between myself and city staff in relationship to what it takes to actually attract restaurants. And I know that if we take a look at what the public has been telling us between the missing missing retail and specifically the missing restaurants, I think the staff did a great job, and I think with the exchange of the information that took place, you know, I think we came away impressed, and I think that unfortunately, we can't disclose all the information of all the, the retailers that we spoke with, as well as the, the individuals representing chain restaurants. But it makes you feel comfortable when we clearly are in a down market, when we all speak about that, because we, we hear now about foreclosures, and I think there's been at least two city council meetings now that I've heard, and foreclosure's been brought up, but it's a breath of fresh air to, to see retailers and restaurant chains recognize Lancaster for exactly what we got an award for. And my sense is, it makes you feel awful good that people are still have an open dialogue in relationship to wanting to work with staff and, and ultimately see some, some retailers come to furtation, so. Again, I'm a little bit guarded about some of the conversations that took place, but clearly like Mr. Lawson said, as well as Councilmember Cilio, I was amazed at 50% of the, of retail to the, that's developed and put together comes out of that conference. And I know that the feedback from developers were, they were quite impressed that we had a compliment of city staff, and then also they were impressed with the fact that there was council members. And then too, to find out that when we spoke about our backgrounds about being planning commissioners, I think that was a positive too, so there was an understanding there of, of planning and how that integrates with the city, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Do we have a closed session?
It's on the agenda, but there's no need for the closed session.
You didn't wanna give us some of that money back, Mark, or?
No, sir.
Just, just checking.
You picked the right guy for that answer.
Okay, then I guess we're adjourned until June 10th at 6:00 PM. No, 5:00 PM now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? We need to do an ordinance to change the regular meeting time of the city council.
So it'll still be at 6 until the ordinance is changed?
It'll still be at 6 until we get the ordinance, it'll be on your next agenda for introduction and then option, and then 30 days from that. So probably first meeting in August is, maybe second meeting in July, but I think there's...
Okay, now we're adjourned until 6 o'clock on June 10th.